Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody out to the Wasatch County School District Board of Education meeting tonight. We'd like to excuse President, poor President Blake Ver... He is on work assignment tonight and he may be here if he gets, if he gets everything done. We'll start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by Board Member Corey Holmes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. As customary in our board meetings, we have some time set aside, the first of every board meeting for public comment. We also have, in each meeting, we have a limit of two minutes for each public comment. So, we'd like to open up that time now. If you'd like to come up, please state your name. And I believe where you live, right? Yeah, your name and your address. We'd like to open up that time now, so if there's anybody who would like public comment, please come up. We'll take public comment from the mic right here at the podium. Seeing as there is no rush for any public comment, is anybody, is there anybody here who is planning on making a public comment? Going once. Twice. Okay. Last call for public comment. Okay. Public comment session is now closed and we'll move on with the agenda. Information, celebration portion of the agenda. We'll turn the time over to Kirsta Albert for the Wasatch Parent Network.
Thank you. I wanted to give our parent leaders, who were formerly the PTAs in each of the schools. They decided, they worked together and voted over the summer to disassociate the affiliate from the national and state PTAs. And they have been brought in under the umbrella of the Wasatch Education Foundation. So they will utilize, and are utilizing, our EIN, so our tax exempt number. And then, as well as their financials have been brought in underneath. But I asked them to join us so that they could sort of explain the impetus for the move, the benefits, how it's been going these first few weeks of school. And really, the only role of the Ed Foundation is to, again, serve as their umbrella with our tax ID number so that their donors are still receiving tax, they're receiving the benefits of donating to a 501(c)(3), so they fall under that. And then also to support them in their financials as they are all, each have their own individual bank accounts and all also administer their own funds, but we're still just providing that support as the Ed Foundation. So I'm gonna let them talk.
Thanks Kirsta. So the Wasatch School PTAs are making a change in 2020 and we're becoming what Kirsta just announced is the Wasatch Parent Network. So, from PTA to WPN. It's a change, but it's a great change. This change allows parents to serve the students and teachers in our schools without the restrictions and financial obligations to a state and a national organization. It has in turn kept our money here in our valley and allowed the parents to be able to donate knowing that it will stay here and not be spent anywhere else, so.
So this is Jeanette Schuler. She's our district Wasatch Parent Network person, so. And then, I'm Angie Newberger and I'm the WPN president at the high school. This is my last year. I'm not doing this again. So, anyway, but what I have to say is I feel like we've been wanting this for a long time. And in the last year, we've talked about it at every PTA meeting of how we can make this switch. And we had the support from our superintendent, we had the support from all the principals. And I feel like it's just been a positive, it's been positive ever since we sent out the emails and nothing but good has happened. The high school, we just had a fundraiser off of an Amazon registry and we were trying to get supplies that students need like backpacks, earphones, water bottles, sweatshirts, because we found out there's a need there. And we had 165 items on the registry and all but 21 have been boughten by people and within one week. So what will happen with that is the counselors will take those supplies and then they will see which students need those supplies in this, this coming year. So anyway, I feel like it's, it's a good move on our part and I hope we have the support from the school board because Utah PTA has been kind of not the nicest since we've made this move. And I just feel like with COVID and everything, we want to just, we feel like our district is amazing and we have amazing administrators, amazing parents that want to get involved. But when we have PTA as kind of our over, it just kind of scares people and they don't want to get involved because they feel like they have to be a PTA member and we just want parents to get involved. So that's why we changed. So, hope you guys support us.
I represent Midway Elementary, so I'm on the elementary side. And I already feel, well, I, for two things, I feel really grateful to feel like we're part of a bigger whole, like a district whole instead of like us, not necessarily that was us and you, you know, the district. But we're now kind of part of, we're under, oh, you know, we're all on the same team. I know we always were. But I also feel like I don't have so many, like for instance, Christmas is coming and I know there are lots of needs and we all have goals in mind to help the kids in our district. And maybe in the past, that couldn't have been something I financially supported if there was a need. But I feel like I can help wherever there is a need, not just a fun activity or something. So, I'm really excited to give more support to the kids because that's what it's about, so.
Thank you.
One of the roles that the Ed Foundation is fulfilling is we are providing online giving portals for each of the Wasatch Parent Networks. So now, parents can give online, on their phone, and we help administer those funds right back to their individual accounts. But we're facilitating that, that ease of online giving. And I think that is something that has supported them as a whole in terms of making it easier for people to give, you know. But does anyone have any questions for?
I did, I did a trial run for her.
She was our first.
So without, without Swiss Days, like our teachers get a huge chunk of money for their teacher budgets from the booth that we do at Swiss Days. And without Swiss Days this year, there was a significant change in their budget. So, I just put it out to the parents and did a supply drive, like sponsor a teacher. And we raised almost $4,200 for that purpose and we're gonna spread it equally. Because also, with the current climate, we have every kid needing their own supplies. So, we were able to support and help with getting the teachers a little bit more money for that. And it was really slick with this.
So, we just wanted to give you an update on, if you hear rumblings about the PTA de affiliation, these are the ladies who are behind it and they've been amazing leaders in ensuring that funds raised in the valley still go back to their individual schools, but are working so cohesively together to make a stronger parent network. And they're relying on each other, learning from each other, while also remaining in communication with the district and with the foundation so that we're all really maximizing all efforts. And I think that really worked out well this year with COVID, so we feel less separate.
One more thing, I feel like there's been a lot more, there's gonna be a lot more checks and balances since we have the money underneath the Wasatch Education Foundation. I think with Kirsta's help and with our treasures, our each individual school's treasures, I feel like we're gonna just have a lot more accountability on where the money's going and what's, what's happening with that. But Kim wants to say a few things, so.
Thank you. I just, you guys all know this is my wheelhouse and my passion and I love these parents. And this is something that I've been involved in for 10 years. And I, these women are amazing, these parents are amazing. And without parent volunteers, parent volunteers are essential to a school, school district. They're essential for our children. It's a proven fact that children do better when parents volunteer in their schools. So I just, I cannot give these guys enough of a clap for all the work that, that they have done. So this is just a celebration for parents who are involved. Thanks.
Yeah, I'd just like to mention that, you know, one of the fun things that I get to do as superintendent, and I have lots of fun things and I have a lot, I have a lot of not-so-fun things. But, you know, one of the fun things I get to do is, is sit in on the, on the district PTA meetings when I can. And I, I've, I've got to know each of these ladies very well. And it's, it's so, it's so humbling just to, to watch them come and work. And the, the concern, the care that they have for, for our kids and not only just their kids, but all of our kids. It's, it's really an inspiring thing and this is a bold move for them. And these are, these are individuals that are, that are not just going through the motions. They want to be the most effective that they can and they think this is gonna really help. And we support it at 100% and I just want each of them to know and, and all of our PTA people and parent volunteers that we're so appreciative and we understand better than anyone that, that, you know, the school district just couldn't go around without the parent support and the, and the, and the parent input from our, from our, now our Wasatch Parent Network, WP. I'm gonna get it soon, yes. But thank you so much ladies, really appreciate you.
Any comments from the board?
I would just say that whatever the PTA was offering you, now that you're independent from them, you will find that and more with the foundation. There's a great group of individuals, full of motivated people that want to support and give back to the community. So it aligns with their mission and they, they will, they will find ways to enhance what you're doing and I think it's a great collaboration. And so, we're here to support along with that foundation.
I would just add to that, if there's anything that we can do as a board to collaborate with any ideas that you have or any directions that you want to go, any way that we can assist on that or, or help, look at our budgets or just whatever it would be. We're very open to that. I like what Angie said is getting things out of the way and just getting parents involved. What a, what a great thing. So, thank you for all your time Angie. I know you put, you put in so much time and the other parents as well.
They all have.
Yeah, all of you. Well, thank you. Thank you for all that you guys do. Thank you. We will move on to the next part, to the next item, the John C. Kish Foundation. That will be Ben Springer and Tess.
Well, I just get the privilege of introducing a dear friend of mine and a colleague of Tess Palzinski. I work with Tess and this is a little situation of relationships. I'm gonna turn the time over to Tess because it's through this relationship with Tess that we have a wonderful relationship with the Kish Foundation. And Tess, I'm gonna turn it over to you. So thanks for being here.
All right, thank you. So I'm Tess and I teach at the Learning Lab, a Learning Lab teacher at the high school. And since the 2018-19 school year, the John Kish Foundation has donated over $25,000 in grant funding for the Wasatch High School Learning Lab Transition Program. And my relationship started with the foundation years ago through my former school district. And I've known Melina for decades and when she became the head trustee of the foundation, she allowed to what I refer as my special ed dream floodgates as a teacher to open. And in over 30 years of teaching, I've never dreamed that I could help provide so many students, so many life-changing experiences that extend out of the classroom. And it's so cool to be able to have that sort of dream fulfilled. The initial grant request here in Wasatch started three years ago when I joined the Wasatch School District Team. And I wrote a grant requesting funding to support monthly community, age-appropriate social outings for the Learning Lab students, as well as funding to include for support staff, which started off at as about 25 individuals. And I throw that out there because before, when I wrote a grant, we could never get funding for paraprofessionals or bus drivers. And when we go out, that would come out of my pocket. So, the foundation recognized that it takes a whole team when we go someplace, those people need to be funded too. And over the past three years, it's, the grant has extended to providing these types of opportunities to our ELL students in Kim's program, our Learning Lab students at the middle school and some of our resource students at the high school, now reaching well over 100 students. We've had dozens of field trips and eaten at various restaurants in Heber Park City and on the Wasatch front. And just to name a few, Gardner Village in the Snake Shack, the Thanksgiving Point in Museum, lunch at Popeyes, the Aquarium, the Planetarium, bowling at Olympus. We worked with the Peak, Parent Peak Foundation to provide opportunities for kids to go horseback riding, skiing, snowboarding and the ropes course at National Ability Center. And we've eaten lunch here at the hub Dairy King Carl's Jr. And I have to say locally, it was awesome when we went to Carl's Jr. because the manager came out and said, "This is the most well-behaved group of high school students she's ever had in the restaurant" and they all got free dessert. And that was a compliment because we worked very hard on what it takes to go out and what it takes to hang out. And they, the students really want to, they just don't always get the opportunity. So that was awesome. And after meeting with Melina and the foundation, I decided there's a lot of other needs we need as far as some educational things that we might not have the money for. So, again, just a couple things, we were able to buy a whole ProEd Foundation Living Educational Board Game Set that includes all life skills, dozens of resource, resources paid, teachers pay teachers. We bought equipment for our unified sports team. We have professional memberships to Kahoots, News2U. We have sets of lockers that were put in the Learning Lab classrooms at the high school because the kids were having such a hard time with the locks outside. We just redid all the kitchen supplies in the Learning Lab. And with that being said, due to these ever-changing, unprecedented COVID times, I knew there was different ways we needed to explore. So for instance, when we go to a field trip in Salt Lake, that might be several hundred dollars a field trip for the bus. And I thought, well, we can't do that. So, Ben allowed me to send a survey to all the district Learning Lab teachers early on in the year and I was able to identify some specific needs in my peers. And since returning from the COVID closure, the foundation again agreed to let me work to try to meet some of the needs that were identified in the survey. So at our first PLC, every Learning Lab teacher, I believe there's 12 or 13 of us in the district, were given a $300 stipend for whatever they wanted. So it would allow my peers to purchase materials needed to support their programs, as well as schedule events. So now, the gifts of the grant giving, we're now reaching several hundred students. Where in the beginning, we were reaching 25. And because of the foundation, just a couple weeks ago, all Learning Lab students from elementary to post-high school got to go to the local pumpkin patch and pick out the perfect pumpkin and from the feedback, everybody succeeded. And that was just awesome. And I'm just beyond grateful for the continued support of the foundation here at the Wasatch School District, as well as the support of our administrators and administrative assistants. We couldn't do what we do without them. From being able to be reimbursed to allowing us to schedule the buses and all the different activities. And we couldn't do all these amazing things without everybody. And the difference I think we're making is priceless. And the saying, "It takes a whole village," Wasatch School District lives that. And like I said, for teaching for over 30 years in multiple states and multiple districts, this is the first time I've really felt that every single day and it's just great. I wanted to just, I asked, didn't ask any parents to come tonight just because of COVID and the situation, but I asked them just to say a couple things. And one is a huge thanks for this amazing grant. One of the greatest things for my daughter is to engage in activities that provide social interactions, especially with kids in the community. I love how opportunities are sought out for her kids. She loves all our field trips and amazing places she's been able to go to because of the grants. This once-a-month outing's so much fun, but it also provides learning experience as well as these soon-to-be adults get to have community experience without their parents and caretakers. And to me, I think that's what they like the most. And a lot of times, we preorder because the kids, if they're able to talk and they get there and they don't talk, they don't eat. So they have it written down and worst-case scenario, they hand it. But in order to get your food, you have to ask. So the ones that are really shy or aren't, are unable to speak always have a backup. But we've seen just huge, tremendous growth, so it's just super exciting. And the fact that, yes, I initially wrote the grant for one thing. With, the longer I'm here, the more I see the need and the more we can share this grant. So it being transition, transition means change and I think that includes everybody and so does the foundation. So, that's been really great. And I want to let Kim speak a little bit about the experiences for her kids.
Hello. My name's Kim Foye, for those of you that don't know me. And I teach English Language Development at Wasatch High School. And I've been blessed to be included on the John Kish Grant. This grant has allowed me to incorporate my essential standards of increasing reading, writing, listening and speaking into real-life learning opportunities. Before a field trip, I run off a menu to the restaurant that we're going to and my students practice reading the menu, deciding what they will order, practicing ordering in English. They've also had to learn how to figure tax and count money in English. The day of the field trip, they're responsible to order in English and pay with money from the grant. This is a big deal for students just learning basic communication skills. As amazing as these real-life learning opportunities are, they're not my favorite part of the experience. I didn't realize when I started teaching English Language Development three years ago that the majority of ELL students don't go on field trips. In fact, some of them have never been on a field trip if they came to our country after elementary age. Typically, if a student is new to our country, their schedule is packed with core classes and all of their elective classes are filled with literacy, English Language Development and numeracy. While these classes are great to give the student everything they need to learn and to graduate, they don't offer extended learning opportunities that every child craves and deserves. I've been humbled and blessed to experience going to places like the Hogel Zoo with teenagers that have never been to a zoo. To take 75 kids ice skating and watch the progression of 75 teenagers scared to death and holding on to the rail to slowly letting go and helping each other learn to try a new experience. We're all aware that every child wants to belong and be accepted. A lot of the students that I take on these field trips are new to our country and they are all learning a new language. They're away from their extended family and friends. Some of my students are dreamers and have many things to worry about in their lives. family and friends. Some of my students are dreamers and have many things to worry about in their lives. After school, most of my students go to work and don't have the opportunity to belong to extracurricular clubs or sports teams. Despite all of the barriers these students are facing, the field trips are an opportunity that they can just be kids. I get choked up when I explain to my students that they don't need money to come, they don't need money for the field trips. The money is coming from great people that want all kids to have extended learning opportunities and know that they are, that they belong and are valued. Every time I have a student question and ask how someone would just give money when they don't even know them, my hope is that these lessons of being kind and helpful and accepting of everyone are the real lessons that my students are gaining from these experiences. Thank you, Melina, and the John Kish Foundation, and also Wasatch High School for paying for the buses. Because again, the buses cost a lot, so I didn't want to take too much from Tess's. So, Wasatch High School pays for my buses, and they also provide an administrator to go with me on the field trips. I'm truly grateful to be able to share these experiences with my students.
And then I wanted to introduce Melina Nicolatis, who's the head trustee of the John Kish Foundation.
Thank you. I'm a little touched by the words, but I'm smiling under. I want to thank all of you for giving the John Kish Foundation the opportunity to thank Tess and Kim for putting our grants to the very best use. The foundation takes pride in assisting the disenfranchised human beings that are so important to our society. We learn from them. Tess does an amazing job finding fun and providing necessities to her students and fellow teachers, and we are so proud to have her as a partner. I get the most amazing thank you cards from every single student, every single time they do anything. Every single student, if they can't write, they draw me a picture. They tell me what they ate. They tell me what they saw. And it's, I read every single one of them, and it is the most touching thing. And we, as a foundation, give money to many great causes. I never get as many thank yous from anything as I do from these kids. They're so unbelievably grateful and so sweet. In ending such a difficult year, the foundation would like to make an additional grant of $5,000, and we know that it will also be put to good use. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That's a, that's a heartwarming and humbling story. I can tell you that as a former high school principal, I love to hang out with the transition students. And, you know, the transition program is so important. Most of these students won't have an opportunity for, for post-secondary education. And our programs and our teachers provide them with the life skills that it's going to take for them to be hopefully independent someday, and at least more independent. And such an important, such an important program at our high school. And I'm telling you, the people like Tess and others that work in those programs, they're, they're angels. They're, they're literally sent from heaven. If you watch what they, what they do on a day-to-day basis, it's, it's just inspiring. We're also, as I think everyone knows, we're, we're always concerned about our, our English language learners. I mean, if we could all just take a minute and imagine what it's like to be in a different country and not know the language and not know the culture. These kids need a lot of help. And we, again, appreciate those people like Kim and others that work directly with them and help them with important things like language acquisition and, and just learning the way of life in a, in a new country that they're in, and hoping to, to get them to a point where, where they actually would, would exit out of our, of our ELL program someday. And at least by the time they graduate, that they have, that they do have post-secondary opportunities available to them. So, just two extremely important programs for, for students that need a little extra help. And, Melina, I just, I can't express our appreciation enough for what you're doing for Wasatch High School and specifically the students, the, the underprivileged students at Wasatch High School. It's a, it's a great place to add some support, and we appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Parents, before, before anyone leaves, we have a couple of announcements I would like to make if, if, if you could stick around. We have, we have a few teachers and parents in the room right now. So, as, as part of, as part of the information section of our, of our board meeting, I, I've got two, I've got two important pieces of information that I'd like to share. First of all, we talked in our, in our previous work session about an announcement that will go out later this evening, but, but we, we chose to announce that in board meeting first. And that is the creation of, of an advisory committee that, that the board is calling the Future Schools Project. So, I think everyone knows that we have some very overcrowded schools in this county. And I think everyone also knows that there are more students coming by the day. And we, we have some demographic reports and other experts helping us pin that number down. And, and we need more space for children. And the board talked at length last year after the, after the bond initiative failed, that we, we were going to go about this a little, a little differently. I think the board, I know the board's intention has always been to be inclusive and to share all the information they can with the public and to work closely with the public. But obviously, with the, with the outcome of the vote, there seemed to be a message, at least from some parts of our community, that, that people want to be more involved. And so, tonight, we're announcing the creation of, of this committee, the Future Schools Project, which will be a community task force. I think we have one more slide here, if we can go to the next slide. This will be the mission of this task force. Convene a community task force of individuals and representatives from organizations to advise the Board of Education regarding future schools in Wasatch County School District. And we're going to ask this task force to do two things. Number one, to address the immediate needs of our students. And number two, to develop a long-range plan, perhaps even a, a 20-year plan. And to use the demographic numbers that we have, we have our own demographic company that has worked with us for a number of years now. We also have the state, the Utah Policy Center that, that works with demographic numbers. And we've, we've brought those two organizations together to kind of figure a balance as to, as to how many students are coming and how quickly. Since the current high school opened in, which has been 10 years ago now, we have added over 1,000 high school students to that school. That's, that's incredible. I don't know that you can find another school in the country that is growing that, that rapidly. Our demographic information says that the exact same thing will happen in the upcoming decade, that, that close to another thousand students will be added. So, we, we have some work cut out for us as a community. And we want the community's help. And we, we want people to, we're going to invite people to come join us from the county council, from all of the city councils. We'll include an individual from each one of those. We, we want, we want our, our Wasatch Parent Network to be very well represented. We, we want parents at large that our, that our school boards may pick in their own districts. We, we, we're talking about the Latino Coalition. We, we know that our friends in Jordanell, I'm not sure if they're even aware, we have a school site in Jordanell. We need, we need to talk about when the appropriate time to build an elementary school in the Jordanell Basin is. That will be part of the, of this committee. So, it's an exciting thing. It will be a large committee, 20 to 30, 20 to 30 people. Every meeting will be open to the public. And we, we look to have a really robust discussion and have it, have it very available to, to every member of our community to take part and come up with some conclusions. We're purposely, after a discussion in, in study session tonight, we're not going to put a time limit, one way or the other, on, on this, on the work that this committee's being asked to do. We're going to let it run its own course. And we're, we're excited to announce that this evening. And we plan to get people invited and onto the committee between now and the end of this, of the year, and hopefully have our first meeting sometime in January. So, I've got another exciting announcement, so nobody go anywhere just yet. But I want to, I want to give, I want to give the board members a chance to speak to the Future Schools Project. You can go back to that original slide now, Stacy. Thank you.
I would just like to say that one of the big learnings for me in the failed bond is members of the community join the conversation at different times. That was frustrating for them. And as, as leaders making decisions, what happens is we think that, well, everybody knows it. And then our, our responsibility is to move on. And so, as you move on, you leave people out of the conversation, and you close the door as you move to the next step. And what I really appreciate this is an extended period of time. And that will give us the chance to involve every community member when it's convenient for them and when they want to engage in dialogue. So, I'm excited about this. I think we can take the learnings from the failed bond and layer that into what we can gain from an open dialogue without a time period and get this right. It's something that we can unite community around. It should be something, and hopefully, a point where everybody could be excited and engage about a potential second high school. It's a great thing. And I do feel, do feel responsible. And I'm sorry that there has been some conflict around this. To know that this is an opportunity to make things better. So, I'm excited to be a part of it.
I think it'll be good for the community as we get more people involved to see what the processes have been in acquiring land and doing the demographics, all of that. As we look back, you know, one thing that is a consensus of the board is that we want community members involved. We want them to know what's happening and find the best ways to do it. And so, I appreciate everything that's gone into this. We've talked about this for a long time, and hope that this will help get everybody on the same page as far as what we're facing and what the best solution is, whatever that may be. We are open to the best solution. The best solution is what is best for kids, and we are open to that.
I think too, with this committee, it shows what work we have already done. I think it's no, everyone knows that we have purchased ground, purchased ground on Midway Lane. And this gives us an opportunity to better sell that to our community on how great this site is and how, what an asset to our community it will be. And, you know, what I've learned with this is, there's, and we all know, there's not a lot of property out there. And it becomes more and more challenging. And I get comments all the time, "Well, why don't you put the school here? Why don't you put the school there?" Well, there's a lot more to it. There's so many moving parts that goes, that goes into this. So, this help is very warranted and very needed, not, not only to help us, but also to help the whole community know what, what's going on. So, we're excited about it, really are.
Okay. The, the other, the other information item that I would, that I would like to announce for the board tonight is, I think that many of you know that we have been approaching the end of our, of our work with the Army Corps of Engineers as it relates to the proposed school site. And, and I might mention that, that buying land ahead of building schools is a common practice. It's, it's more of the norm than the exception. We, we own a few different pieces of land as a school district around the, around the valley that we've either bought or that have been donated. And the, you know, I think the board was very clear in the lead-up to the bond election and, and wanted people to, wanted to be upfront and let people know we, that they had every intention of buying the 60 acres on the, in the northwest quadrant of Heber down, down here. And they, they bought that land before the bond election ever happened. And I think, you know, the board would, and I, the board can, can chime in here, but the board would tell you that, you know, there's, there's a, there's a myriad of possibilities with that, with that land. It was specifically bought for a high school, but we're willing to let the work of this committee take place and see if, if the committee comes up with, with better ideas. We're confident that, that there would be some, some school, some type of school or other school district facilities built on this property. In our mind, it will most, most likely be a high school. But we're willing to, to let that process play out and, and see how, see how that goes moving forward. In, in either case, with, with the inflation in land prices that, that have taken place in the past year, I think that our board's very happy that they bought the, that they bought the land when they did. And they, they bought it exactly parcel for parcel. There were six different parcels, which is, is no small feat for the board to, to pull all that together. But they, they bought it almost to the dollar at the appraised value. And that's how the school district operates. When they purchase land, they have a MAI-certified commercial appraisal, appraiser done, appraisal done that both parties agree on. And that's what they pay. Nothing more, nothing less. Three of those parcels were already in Heber City. They, they butt right up against Sixth West in Heber City. And the others are in the annexation zone of Heber City. And so, tonight, we got a report back. We got, we got our request granted for a final determination from the Army Corps of Engineers. Do we have any slides on that, Stacy, tonight? You know, the due diligence on a, on a piece of ground like this is you hire, you hire your own experts to come in and evaluate the ground. It's really no, it's really no secret as to any property in Wasatch County. There's a, there's a map that was produced in 2008 that shows wetlands around the valley. Our, our local engineer and advisor told us he thought there was about two to two and a half acres of wetlands on the 63-acre site. We, we have since had, had studies done. We, we did have a study done that was, that was a little out of whack with what we knew to be the case down there. We had Chuck Easton from Lochner do a study that identified, that identified about, and I, I believe it was, was .79 acres on the site. As he did his work with the Army Corps and finished, finished his, his final report, the Army Corps came and did several visits this past summer, starting in the spring. And they have just now made a final determination that you can see in this slide. It shows the, the green spot is, is what's, is what is considered wetlands. There's several different designations for wetlands. And, and all told, if you, if you look at the bottom red, the final determination- bottom red, the final determination from the Army Corps of Engineers is it's 1.79 acres. So if in fact a high school is built on this site, we will primarily build around that two acres. We'll make that into an educational facility. We've already talked to the Army Corps about permission to put a boardwalk over the top of it, use it for our physical science classes, also for our FFA classes are very involved in range and grasses and different types of things that way. So it will become an educational tool for the future high school if that ends up being the final determination as to what's built there. So this is a final determination by the utmost authority that does not, you know, unfortunately, this turned into a bit of a political back and forth. And there's no political leanings at the Army Corps and this is their stamp of approval on this final determination of 1.79 acres. So we will be announcing that tomorrow morning as well. And we will in turn be releasing all documents that were used in the lead-up to get to this conclusion at this time. And those documents will be posted on our website sometime tomorrow. And we're excited. It's been a long process and there's been a lot of conversation about it. We're excited to kind of put this chapter of the discussion on this site to rest.
Thank you.
Sure. Does the red is the line?
Yes.
And does the school vote in all that then or does?
So I wished we had a proposed site plan. I don't know that we have one handy, Stacy, but the school itself will run from top to bottom. If you see the light colored area, they've been raising alfalfa hay on that piece, which you can't do in wet ground. And along that strip would be the building itself. And then as you turn the corner to the right and go back towards Sixth West and Heber City, those will be the fields. So the football stadium, the practice fields, the baseball, the softball, the soccer, all of the fields will be out in that area. And there'll be a couple of parking lots, but the building itself will be built down in the alfalfa filled area and over towards where the wetland starts. And it will face towards, you know, as we're looking at this map, it will face towards our left or towards Midway. Other comments or questions?
I was just going to say that this is important for us to be able to communicate to the community that the process has been complete and the bio west abandoned study that the Taxpayers Association requested will be released tomorrow morning and any litigation will be dismissed on our end. So the taxpayer will be sure that we're not spending their money to defend something that the Taxpayers Association felt strongly about. And the reason why we did what we did under the grammar law, which is the right to appeal, is to let this process play itself out and it's done that. So the couple of weeks that it's been in the news and been talked about, this is the solution that we were hoping to have it happen in the timeline that we thought it was going to happen. And so this is important for us to be able to show this to the public.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking around. I'm glad we got the audience. It would have been an empty room by the time they got to this.
Any more comments on this? Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming. Thank you for all your work.
Move on to the consent item portion of the agenda.
I make a motion that we present, what's the word I'm looking for? Approve the consent items.
I'll give it a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Move on to the action items. First item is the SOQ Mechanical Engineering Services, Heber Valley Elementary, Francis.
It's going to be necessary to replace the chiller at Heber Valley Elementary School during the next budget year, so FY '22. In order to make that happen in July, we need to hire a mechanical engineer now and bid that project in January so that the equipment can be ordered and arrive in a timely manner. So this was not on this year's budget, but what we did is send out a statement. When you're hiring professional services, as you know, you send out a statement of qualifications that is scored. And then you take the higher score as the most qualified and negotiate a price with them. If you can't negotiate a price with them, you'd move down the list. In response to this SOQ for a mechanical engineer for Heber Valley Elementary, we had three firms respond. Nelson Engineering, Olson and Peterson, Van Borum and Frank. You can see here the scoring that the scoring committee did. They chose Nelson Engineering as the higher score. Scoring was very close. You notice we have company A, B, C, and D there. That's to hold the other engineering firm's score so it's not tied to their name in case it bothered them what their score was. So we had a couple of extra companies in there. They know what their score was in comparison to everyone else. The negotiated price with Nelson Engineering is $10,500 and that is my recommendation that we hire Nelson Engineering for $10,500 to do the plans, the engineered plans for the chiller replacement at Heber Valley Elementary. I might say that this was not a budgeted item this year. However, due to the favorable bidding that's happened on other projects, there is sufficient within the budgeted amount in capital projects to cover this.
Francis, so explain to me, did you get other bids from other companies or do you not do that?
When you're doing professional services, you do not get bids. You choose the most qualified and then you negotiate a price with them.
Okay. And I know oftentimes you'll tell me, "We thought this is what our budget was for this and this is..." Did you have a, what was your budget?
My guesstimate was $12,000 for the engineering portion of this. The project itself, which will come up on the next capital list in February when I bring that to the board, it's a big project, $250,000. So it's a pretty good sized project, dollar-wise.
And it's fair to say, Francis, if the company with the top score, if we can't reach an agreed upon price, then we go to the next person on our list.
That's correct. Then you go to the next highest scoring company and try and negotiate with them and work down the list. Usually you can come to a price with the successful.
Well, and it's not like there's not some industry standards on what the price should be and people kind of agree on where things are at.
Right.
We're in constant contact with other school districts and Francis.
And other similar projects.
And it's not rocket science to figure out what other people are paying or charging for this type of service. And so it's a good process. It's a legal process and it works well.
It does. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
What are we doing here? What are we making a motion for?
To accept Nelson Engineering as the firm to do the mechanical engineering for Heber Valley Elementary for $10,500.
All moved.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thanks, Francis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Francis. All right. Item number two, the COVID-19 Response Policy. Sean Kelly and Aubrey Parks.
So before we get to that, I want to, we've heard tonight of about a lot of people who have done wonderful, great things. And we have somebody in our midst who has done a miraculous job. And I want you guys to know that Aubrey Parks has been maybe one of the most important people our district has had. Through a COVID-19 pandemic, this lady has worked and worked and worked and handled problems. I just want to recognize her tonight and tell the board that we're very, very fortunate to have somebody of this caliber who is working on a daily basis with such a unique situation. And she gets in trouble with parents, she gets in trouble with teachers. From time to time, I get crossways with her, not very often. Once in a while. But I really want you to know how fortunate Wasatch School District is. I think we have the foremost COVID person in the whole state. And I also think that's why we're where we are, is because of her expertise, her knowledge, the way she handles people. I just, I want to recognize her tonight and tell her thanks for doing such a good job.
So, yes. I'm wondering, Director Kelly, if before you get into the response policy, maybe we could have Aubrey come up. I know that she's really good when we put her on the spot.
She is.
She's always excellent and professional and I'd like for her to come up and talk to the board a little bit about the new quarantine procedure and how the state's allowing us to cut from 14 days to seven. And the exciting part about that, I'll let Aubrey share this, is about where they're going to be tested.
Yeah, sure. So Stacy's going to pull up for us on our website under our COVID-19 Response Policy. Kirsty just put this up for us yesterday. So the new, it's called Low Risk Return or Test and Return, and it allows anyone who is in a masked environment in a school-based setting only, who is exposed while fully masked, both parties had to be fully masked, and then COVID-19 Action Plan on the top. Get right there. And then if you scroll down to the bottom of that, keep going, Low Risk Test and Return, right there, perfect. So anyone who is in a fully masked environment where both parties were masked for the entirety of their exposure are able to start a qualification process to be tested during quarantine at the seven day mark from their last exposure, if they were, again, fully masked, if they were fully asymptomatic during the entire quarantine process to that point. And then if they test negative with a rapid test, they are permitted access back into the school-based setting. So that would include both the educational setting and any connected school-based activities. I want to be clear that this is not a release of quarantine. Those teachers or students would still need to quarantine from other outside settings. This is an attempt by the state, the governor, the Utah Department of Health to get these students back to learning opportunities and anything else connected with school. So I got a little bit of pressure from the state School Nurses Association to not do what we have done. And I'd worked with the health department in acquiring an ability to test onsite through Wasatch County. The reason being our testing center here in Wasatch County is heavily overloaded. And what we're seeing is a two to three hour wait time on the phone to make an appointment for testing, followed by a one to three hour wait in their car, followed by about a 72 hour wait for results. And in order to do this rapid testing and get these students back and have maximum benefit from this new guideline, we would need to do that testing on our own. So we have set up, we have applied for and we're granted a CLIA waiver, which allows us to hold a lab through Wasatch County School District. I'm the director of that lab through the government CLIA waiver. And we will hold rapid testing so that we can perform these tests quickly by appointment and get these students and staff back to school.
So if you think of seven days of students that have missed out, I know Tom's had this in his own house where this is cutting off a full week of quarantine for our students. And you know, the first problem that came up after this was announced was, it's still going to take them almost 14 days to get the test and get the results. As Aubrey mentioned, I'm sure there's many districts that don't want to tackle the testing part of it. But Aubrey's really not scared of anything. She's not even scared of Mr. Kelly. And so she was happy and eager to take that on. We're approved, we're about ready to start, right? Or have we started?
Yeah, so our CLIA lab is open, our CLIA waiver lab is open effective today.
And that lab is located in the north campus?
It's located in the north campus outside of the back parking lot. We test patrons in their car and it's by appointment that they schedule through the Health Services Department.
And how soon do they get those results?
15 minutes.
15 minutes. So this is a big deal. It's a big deal educationally for our students. And as Mr. Kelly mentioned, we're just really happy that, you know, some people, some people are destined to be in the right time, in the right place at the right time. And we feel that way about Aubrey and the staff that she's been able to hire. We are so appreciative of her being here and we've learned not to argue with her. She's kind of like arguing with Mr. Watt. By the time you're done, he always proves you're wrong. And so now we have two people that Sean and I just have to say, "Okay," and just go along with whatever they say to us. But thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah.
And please continue. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. No, it's a great thing. It's a great thing for our community. I'm sure you've noticed that we're still in the high transmission index. As the largest gathering of people in the county, we have a due diligence to be mindful of that. And I think testing is one of the foremost things we can do to prevent that transmission index. And so being able to open a lab, I am super grateful to the directors that allowed that to happen. Like Superintendent alluded to, not every district is as supportive of that. So it's been a great partnership.
Yeah, all I can add is my personal experience, my freshman was quarantined for two weeks. And you think when you hear quarantine that he's homesick. No, no symptoms, healthy, confined to the house, all his friends are at school. In the second week's the harvest. And I saw him go backwards in a lot of different areas, not just academically. I did see it in academics. I will say that I'm a, I thought I was a believer before, but I'm a more believer now that the classroom is the great equalizer. And if we can get the kids in that classroom with a caring parent, with their peers, they will have the best chance of success.
Yes.
So thank you for getting our children back in the classrooms sooner than later.
Yeah.
And I would just echo what she said. I know someone very close to me that was on that, trying to get a hold to get a test, three hour wait, true story, only to find out that, "Oh, we close in five minutes. Call back Monday." And by then, it didn't matter. So it's great that you're able to test them and give them a result in 15 minutes. I think that's just super, so thank you.
Yeah.
So one of the things that I think is important, if the test, they can't have any symptoms. If we test them and the test is negative, they're good to go back. If the test is positive, then they go get a regular test. Is that expedited or do we still have issues with that?
So currently, that's still, we still have issues. However, the health department has purchased five machines that allow for, it's called a BD Veritor machine. Veritor is in verify. The rapid test is just like a rapid pregnancy test or a rapid strep test or a rapid any test in medicine. It has to be confirmed by a formal test. Right now, the only option for anyone in our county is to get that test through the PCR method, which is through our testing center. We've already explained the delays with that. And so the health department has purchased five BD Veritor machines and they have offered to give one of those BD Veritor machines to us. We would have to charge for the test or take that financial hit ourselves. It's about $40 a test. And so that is currently under discussion as to how we could acquire that machine from them for free and how and if we would test that qualifying confirming test for a positive patient versus sending them back out. confirming test for a positive patient versus sending them back out to wait.
Okay, so moving on to the, the thing that we're bringing to you tonight is a policy. As you know, the state has the school manual, which is what we base all of our decisions on, and the quarantine, and all of that is based out of the school manual. With Aubrey's input, we felt like, especially her, that we needed a school policy that mirrored the school manual, because all the time, you know, we, we have to follow policy. So tonight, we have drafted the, the COVID response policy that mirrors the school manual policy. My hope is that you would approve that tonight, effective immediately, because there's nothing in it that isn't already being followed by the school manual. This just makes it a Wasatch School District policy that we can rely on when parents get crossways with this of policies. We can say, well, this is a district policy as well. Am I missing anything on that? So typically, we send things out for review. My hope is that we just adopt this tonight, if that's legal or possible. It may not be. I don't, I don't know. I like to push the rule, I guess. And see if we can do it tonight so that we can start having this policy in place. If not, we'll put it out for the, until the next board meeting, review and, and make it official. It, it really is okay either way, I guess.
Keith, do you know if we can do that?
Our practice has always been to put it out for review.
We, that's fine. We can do that because we're already following the manual anyway.
I would be comfortable if, uh, if we passed it tonight with the condition that we will check with our attorney in the morning. And if that's not legal, then, then, uh, part of the motion would be, once we check with him, then we will, we will clarify that it's out for 30-day review.
All right.
If he feels like, uh, we're on solid legal ground to do so, we'll leave the motion as is. If the board's comfortable with that.
So let me see if I can get this right. I make a motion that should be approved, the COVID-19 response policy, presented by esteemed Director Ollie. And we will put it out, and we'll, we'll call our lawyer in the morning, clarification. This vote is okay if it's passed. If not, then vote void and we'll send it out for a 30-day review. How's that sound, Board members?
That's, that sounds great. And I, I think the word Stacy to put in the minutes is, um, it's contingent upon legal approval.
All right, I have a motion.
Give a second.
In a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, item three, addition of teacher workdays for 2020, 2021.
Can I jump the gun?
We can just jump to Jason, who's here.
Who did I jump in front of? It's just Jimmy.
All right.
Sorry.
We'll skip from two to five.
You know, I was relatively sure by looking at that agenda that I was next for some reason.
I'm so excited.
That's the first mistake he's made since I've met him 20 years ago. Somebody make a mark on the board over here.
We're so excited to talk about sexual harassment.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say, let's jump from COVID to sexual harassment.
All right. Uh, sexual harassment policy, Jason Watt.
Thanks. So the proposal is to, um, put a new sexual harassment policy out for 30-day review. During, earlier this summer, the federal government, the Department of Education released new guidelines that, um, that all schools need to follow in how we handle cases of sexual harassment in our schools. This policy is specific to, to sexual harassment cases that fall under the jurisdiction of Title IX. Okay? And so as part of that, for, for, so like, so any employee on student sexual harassment would automatically follow under, under this policy. Any student on student sexual harassment that does not occur at school or in a school program automatically would not follow under this, under this policy. And there's a few other little, little areas in there as well that are, that are, are stipulated in here. But these new guidelines are very prescriptive and spell out exactly how, um, schools are to handle these sorts of cases. Um, like I say, this handles any employee on student sexual harassment and any student on student sexual harassment that happens on school, at school or a school function. The definition of, of what would be, of what would be handled under this policy is in the four-dot-six. Basically, anything that's sexual assault or any unwelcome conduct determined by a reasonable person to be so severe persuasive and objectively offensive that it denies a person equal access. And so those are the, those are the, um, the, the stipulation or the, the, that's the definition of sexual harassment for this policy. Things that don't apply, that follow, follow under that could still be handled under our safe schools policy. They're just requiring us to have this more formal way to handle sexual harassment allegations. This policy provides, um, uh, like I say, a very formal process where both sides are, um, are, are given access to all the evidence and can bring in advisors or attorneys in this process. This process is, um, um, provides, it provides, uh, supports and protections for both the claimant and the respondent. And so, um, as you've read through that, you'll, you'll notice that it's very, it's very step-by-step. It's easy to follow. This was written by attorneys in some of the larger school districts and then shared with, with other ones. And so this has been written by attorneys as part of the review period. It will also go to our attorney. Um, but this keeps us in, in compliance and we will start, um, we'll, we will, you know, we're, we're already abiding by the, the, the stipulations in this because it's, it was made effective in, in August. We just had to have some time to get our, to get our policy up to speed. And then the state is providing specific training on how, um, how this is to be carried out later on this month that we'll be attending. Any questions about this policy?
So the motion is to have this policy go out for 30-day review?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think I did. I was clarifying.
Well, I'd make a motion that the sexual harassment, under the jurisdiction of Title B4, not nine, projections go out for 30-day review.
Yeah.
I'm not wearing my glasses tonight.
Okay, I have a motion.
Give a second.
In a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, item three, addition of teacher workdays for 2020, 2021. Esteemed Director Jim Judd.
So as, as you guys can imagine and know, um, navigating teach, teaching and learning during a pandemic is new ground for all of us. And, um, and you can see it with what, what Aubrey Parks and Sean have put together. We, it seems like we've come so far in managing this and understanding it and how to effectively teach and learn, um, during some of the unique, uh, things that this pandemic has put in front of us. So we made the decision, uh, or the state allowed at the beginning of the year, that districts kind of have, uh, six days that they can flex in order to support teaching and learning during a, a pandemic situation. We opted, and not every district did this, we opted to kind of hit the ground running in August and then let the feedback loop between us and the schools and the teachers help us know the best way to do that. So last, we started off this year with three goals. The first goal was that we were not going to have any teacher contract COVID-19 virus while they were at work. Second goal is that we weren't going to shut down any school, um, based on the COVID-19. And then the third one is we are going to have all the students master their teaching and learning. Well, as you guys know, we're, we're having some success. We are at the tail end of a, of a two-week, um, online move, uh, to reset the high schools' numbers. But we came to you last month with an attempt to use the teacher feedback with, um, utilizing one of those flex days. And we did that last, this previous Monday. And the idea was, we need, the, the feedback we're getting from the teachers is managing their classroom plus the high absenteeism, plus the quarantine kids, plus those that have COVID, is really making the teachers create their classroom in brick and mortar, but also recreate that same classroom digitally. And as you guys, those of you who have high school students like I do, the experience these last two weeks is so different from last spring. It's significantly different. And that's a testament to the teachers and their ability to keep these two virtual classrooms and brick and mortar classrooms going. So we recently interviewed all the parents and all the teachers for more feedback about how the first quarter went. And overwhelmingly, the teachers are saying, we absolutely valued and appreciated and utilized this extra teacher workday. So with that background, this is what we're asking the board as an proposed amendment, a proposed amendment to our calendar this year. You can see on this calendar, we've added some extra workdays, um, at midterm and then at the beginning of the next term. So the first one would be on November 30th, and that's highlighted in the color blue. On November 30th, we are asking for a teacher workday, and that lies at the midterm of second quarter. And then, and this kind of follows up with the conversation we had in study session, January 5th, that would be the first day of third quarter. We're asking for a teacher workday to prepare, again, what they're preparing here is all their learning that normally would happen in brick and mortar, putting it into the digital space, that that would be another additional workday. So these would be days that students would not come, but like last Monday, we would still provide lunches and things like that. February 12th would be a midterm workday. And then the final one would be March 23rd, which would be our final workday. So that lands on the midterms and then the first day of the next quarter. So again, that's November 30th, January 5th, February 12th, and March 21st. That utilizes five of the six flex days that the state is allowing us for this year.
So these flex days, what they're saying is that's five less days kids have to go to school.
That, that's right.
The teachers could take as kind of a, what you call them, a professional development day.
Right. And so, just, just for those who are maybe listening to on, on YouTube, we're required to teach kids 180 days a year. This is the only time I've ever heard of an exception to that at this level where they're saying because of the pandemic, they're giving districts six days where we can flex it and say, you don't necessarily have to have kids in because teachers need, the way we're utilizing it is giving teachers time.
If you, if you follow the news a little bit, you'll, you'll notice some districts are giving teachers time every week.
Yeah.
Right.
Where they'll, they're either having a Friday or Wednesday where the students don't even go to school every week. And, uh, they're calling those school days because they're, they're still, they're sticking to the, um, and calling it online, which, which is fair enough. Um, we think this is a, is a better option, the, the one that, that we're, that we've come up with that utilizes those days. And we, we're still, we're still pretty much back in school. As Jim mentioned, you know, there is a difference. Um, this, this, uh, this online experience that I'm having, my, my kids are still in front of their computer having Zoom meetings during their, during their specific time, um, in a lot of their classes that, that's required. And we're, our teachers are spread really thin right now. And they're, I mean, they're, we, we, we love them. We love what they're doing and the work they're putting in. They're, they're, you know, they're at the end of their rope a little bit. And these days have been kind of a lifeline for them.
So Jim, what are we doing to, you, you mentioned that we interviewed the teachers and parents?
Yes.
So.
A survey.
Survey.
Not an interview.
Sorry, survey. Um, what are we doing to relay this message so that there's no, we can knock down any rumors or any misinformation i- if this is approved?
Well, as, as you guys know, messaging is always highly important. And, and the thing we sometimes get in public ed, we get beat up enough about that, we didn't know, we didn't know, we don't understand. So, um, upon approval of this, we'll draft a, a statement, um, of why we're doing this. We did find a lot of favorable results from most parents on last Monday. We did unfortunately have one social media post of the parent who didn't know this was happening. And, um, you know, I, I don't know how you get around that too much. I, we sent countless notifications, either by the teacher or by the school district or by the school. Um, but there didn't seem to be in this past Monday, any issue with the understanding of why teachers need an extra day.
Yeah.
At least our feedback from parents is very grateful, um, of the work that teachers are doing right now. In fact, I would, I would say I've never seen so much gratitude from a community for what teachers are doing.
Well, there's still districts here in the state that are on, online only.
Yeah.
And our parents overwhelmingly are so grateful that we're in school, face-to-face every day, that to give up a few of these days versus when they hear about their cousins in other states and, and even in Salt Lake that are, that are, that home, you know, every day, they're just so grateful that we're in school. That's, that's a real strong message that I hear all the time.
Yeah. But to your point, we would, we would use the same kind of blitz on all of our media outlets as possible to let parents know, now that we've got the year mapped out, here are some days, start planning for it. This is to make your, your kids' experience meaningful. And, and try to help them understand though, I think most get it, especially right now in the high school, that teachers are creating stuff in two places. Their physical classroom and their online classroom.
Thank you. Want to entertain a motion?
Make a motion to accept the proposed amended schedule for the 2020 school year and to 2021's school calendar as presently constituted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. This will be met with a lot of gratitude from our staff.
All right, uh, 2021, 2022 calendar. Kirsty Albert.
So after study session, I made a few changes to the second iteration of the calendar. So as we presented earlier, this first draft of the 2122 calendar most closely resembles our current school year calendar. We would go and start school in August of 2021 on Monday, the 16th. And mimicking, this is the first year that we are ending terms before breaks. You will have that happen again. Is that?
I think we got, I think we got.
No, what you have is the second draft. No, what you have is the second draft, plus the second page shows the different terms, how it breaks out by the dates on the term. It's the same calendar, but it demonstrates how we have mapped out to still it 180 days.
Okay.
So sorry. So, but on the first, because we had talked at length about that.
We're looking at one here.
We're looking at, one is here.
Two in front of us.
Two in front of you. You have one from the, I'm sorry. This is the one I passed out.
Yeah.
At the study session. So, yeah, don't look at them at the same time. So this is what we went over. Nothing has changed since we talked about it in study session. But to reiterate, we have terms ending before a break. You have the first term ending on Tuesday, October 13th, 2021. Sorry, it ends on the 12th. We have a professional development day, like we did this year originally planned, on the 13th, and then 14th and 15th, our fall break. And then you have the second term ending on Friday, December 17th, two full weeks of winter break. Stacy, the, can you put that back up? Thank you. Okay. Then can you go up to January? Just scroll up a little. Then as you can see, we have that professional development day on Monday, January 3rd. Holidays on the 17th and on February 21st. Then you have the third term ending on Friday, March 11th, spring break. And then for this, the professional development day that we had talked about in the second iteration, in the first, we didn't talk about moving because it does fall after in April, that Good Friday or Easter vacation on the 15th. And then the professional development day is on Monday, the 18th. And then school would end on Thursday, May, sorry, 26th. So this is what we looked at earlier. I've made no changes to it after our initial conversation during study session. Do you have any questions about this after we went over the second version in study session?
I think just pursuant to our conversation in the study session, we would, we would move... If we did approve this draft one versus draft two, we would move the 18th up to the end of the term, like we talked about in the other one.
So instead of after Easter break, we'd put that back up and to kick off the term, right?
That's got to be at the end or the start of, of term three or four.
Perfect. So I'd move that up. We'll make that note. If this were, so that April 18th, which is again kind of hard to see because of the blue on blue, but April 18th on this version is shown as a professional development day, but that would move up to March 21st, following spring break. So it would extend spring break for students, the full week plus that Monday. Does that make sense? And then the Monday is a professional development day to fulfill that three PD days that we were talking about. Is that right? Yes? Cool?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we look at the second version, the second option, possible option. And Stacy, did you get the one I, okay. So this is an updated version from what we talked about earlier. And so this starts same as the other version on Monday, August 16th. This iteration has an October full fall break. So if you could go up just a little, Stacy, to October. Now, when we had our conversation at study session, we found out we were missing one professional development day. And I spoke with my fellow directors. We talked about the Friday before school starts. Does it happen after Memorial Day? And the recommendation from our academic directors is Monday, October 11th would be a professional development day. And that, but the students, and then the rest would be fall break, but the students would have the full week off. That still keeps us starting on Monday, August 16th, and ending the Friday before Memorial Day. Does that make sense? Okay. So then going down, so again, we are ending terms before a break, same as the other calendar. Winter break, if you go in December, Stacy, hasn't changed. If we go back up to January, we have added back in the second professional development day, which is that Monday, January 3rd, similar to the other calendar. We go to March, and we have the, uh, spring break is the same. And as you can see, kind of March 21st, it's a little darker blue. That's the professional development day. We did move up from the 18th. Then we go down, we do not have Easter, Friday holiday, and then we end on Friday, the 27th. And that gives us 180 days. But after our conversation, the change would be for that third PD day of the three, we would go to the Monday, October 11th. So teachers would be in school on the 11th and then have off the 12th through the 15th, but students would have the full week off. What do you think?
So you didn't have to add back two days?
It was just one because that April one wasn't really showing up, and it was moved up to... It just didn't, on the, on the printout, you couldn't really see it, but it was there. So that was moved up to March. And I did careful math, and we still have 180 days.
Yeah, that's what this is. Fourth quarter is a, is a stretch, but there's testing involved.
Exactly. So it gives a few more days, actually, a little bit of a cushion for those testing days.
Have testing, you also have, you know, those last two or three wrap-up days in the fourth quarter. So we're, we, we think that's a good, a good way, probably the term that needs a few extra days in it.
Can you go back up to January?
That's causing me heartburn, Mark.
No, I like it. Just making sure that Cory's day was there on the 30th.
Well, we're going to name that Cory's day.
You convinced me that this year, in 2022, that probably is...
It will be the holiday observed. It will probably be New Year's Day observed for most employees.
Because you won't be closed on the 31st.
Right.
So I can choke it down.
So you're not only going to show up and say, "What are these kids doing here?", they're going to show up and say, "What's grandpa doing home?" Do you have any grandkids yet?
Uh, no, I don't.
Well, they're coming somewhere.
So are we picking one or two, or are we going out for review?
We need to decide. One or two, and then whichever one we pick will go out for 30-day review.
I think in the study session, we were filling mic number two.
Sorry, I will say anecdotally, as a parent and speaking to other parents, that idea of fall break has been very well received as a full week. Sorry.
Yes. Is there anyone, any of the directors, anybody in the audience?
Any feelings on the whole, whole week at fall break?
Heartburn on January 3rd. Anybody?
Hey. So this will, this motion is to put it out for 30 days?
Mm-hmm. Till the next board meeting.
Till the next board meeting.
I, I propose we put the draft number two out for 30-day review. Want to tell them next board meeting.
Okay. You have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Cool. Thank you.
Thanks for your work on that, Kirsta. That's a, that's a tedious job, and we appreciate you doing that. And we appreciate your, your quick response to make those changes in between study session and board meeting.
Thank you. Item five. Oh, okay.
You want to do it again? I think we're at item one or two.
Item six, school fees.
We got to enjoy the moment when it happens. Okay, maybe, uh, for those who are going to be watching this broadcast or are watching it now, we probably need a little background on what this is. We've, as a, as a district and the state of Utah in general, the philosophy in order to keep taxes low has to require students who participating in choice things, extracurricular or curricular, that they attach the fees based on their interest. And so that puts the burden on where that follows. And it's always been the case that those students who have financial difficulties can apply for a fee waiver so that we do not deny access to anybody from getting whatever experience they want in public education. In the state of Utah, elementarys do not charge any fees, but secondary schools are allowed to do that. So recent legislation and board rule have prompted us to try and become more transparent with our fees for the public. And so part of this, and we came last spring to do all of this, was we had open meetings where people could comment on the fees. We have spending plans that are attached to each fee. So if a parent wants to know, "Well, what, what really are you buying with this $80 art fee?", then they can click on the spending plan and see the exact types of things. So as most things that are required by board rule, we get audits and we get compliance forms in the fall or in the spring to make sure we've done everything right. So we just went through the process with all of our schools and the school district to fulfill our compliance forms, and there were a couple of areas we were not in compliance. And so the purpose of tonight's me, uh, fees is to rectify the areas that we weren't in compliance and kind of fix those so that we are fully compliant with the law and the board rule. So what you have, and what you have to approve tonight is both the high school and the middle school fees. One thing that we were not compliant with is not only do you have to have caps on how much an activity can be, you have to have a, an aggregate cap that no student in the school will ever pay more than that. And so with a tremendous amount of work from the high school administration and financial staff and the middle school, we tried to wrestle around with what those caps would be. And, and because of the amount of opportunities afforded our students, those caps are quite high. We don't see very many, down to less than what you could count on two hands, students being this expensive, but depending on their interest and what they participated, it could be. So the difference on the middle school fees is there's now a cap, an aggregate cap of $1,000. And that seems like a lot for middle school. And the reason for the cap is because of musical instruments. It is possible that you could have a student in band and in orchestra renting a very expensive piece of equipment. And so we had to kind of cap it at a place that allows for those programs to happen on top of the other things. So that's kind of why the caps are set high. And we've consulted with other districts around the state to see where they're at, and this kind of goes in line with where they are. So that's the only change on the middle school.
Where does that, where does that show up on there?
So if you scroll down to the very bottom, it, it's on the same place on both fee schedules. So if you just scroll down the bottom right, there on the bottom.
Oh, okay.
So you see the cap of the high school is 8,000. And that is taking into account of some students who had, again, we tried to decide what could be the most expensive. Well, if a student is in this activity, this activity, and goes on these two travel trips, you can get to 8,000 pretty quick.
And, and we looked at other districts as well. Alpine School District's maximum was 10,000. Some, some of them were 7,500. This is in the, in the range of all the other districts.
And then just in the sake of transparency, we've also needed to change a couple of fees. And this is mainly because the cost of things has gone up since we proposed this back in February. So there's a change in yearbook fees from 45 to 55, a change in theater of a maximum of 125, a change in woods, two, up to a maximum of 210. Different organizations like the National Junior Honor Society have gone from $23 to $25. And then ag mechanics was a, a class that we failed to get on the original fee schedule last spring that we need to fix. And so the way you see how it says "up to", that's in the legislation that we put the maximum amount. So for example, in woods, there's a, there's a range that goes up to something very expensive. And that's totally dependent on what kind of wood the student chooses to use for his project or her project. So those are the changes. Again, mainly it's for the aggregate cap. And so we need an action item to approve the adjusted fee schedules for the 2021 school year.
Make a motion to approve the adjusted fee schedules for 2021 school year. It's presented by esteemed member Jimmy Judd.
Now we would, this change would also require us to go out for 30-day.
Okay.
Out for a 30-day bid.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Well, you know, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Do you feel like people are staying within those guidelines or programs?
With their, with their fee schedules?
Yeah.
Yes. And so another part of this is a training component. So at the high school, Ryan Bishop, and he is, one of his tasks is every, every subject and every extracurricular that has a fee associated with it has to go through the training. And they have to submit their fee spending plans so that there's a check and balance. So they can't just say, "Oh, it's about 50 bucks to take this." It's know what materials are kids purchasing, needing, and what are the costs of those. So for some of these, it's a little hard to pinpoint, like we've just learned this year with wood. When the price goes up, it, it's hard to be exact, but that's why we have this amendment issue, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item seven, student health packs, Superintendent Swett.
Okay, we can be pretty quick on this one. Student health packs are something that we've, that we've discussed in previous meetings. We, uh, we brought in enough health packs. These health packs, I think the board's all pretty well aware of them. We just, we wanted to make sure this was in an official meeting. It's really, the, the cost of the district on this is zero, but there was some pass-through money. The, the student packs, we have, we got enough for two for each student and also one or two for each teacher. They had 10 masks, a package of, of antiseptic wipes, and then also the antibacterial that you put on your hands. And they were, they were reclosable. Each student could have in their locker, in their backpack, at their desk. These were distributed the first round earlier in the year. The second round will be distributed, Mr. Kelly, I think you're planning on January, to get that second pack out. If you, if you, if you heard around the state, there were a lot of teachers and even, even parents that were, that were concerned that their districts weren't getting them enough supplies to protect themselves with. And we really liked the fact that by giving our students and our teachers their own, their own little health pack they could put in their room or their desk. And I don't think any teacher that's requested an additional one has been turned down. They don't, you know, they didn't have to come and, and ask their principal for a mask this morning. They, they, they had it with them. They were, they were provided. They, they, they had it with them, they were, they were provided. So we felt like this was a wonderful PR tool. As, as I explained in a previous meeting, Wasatch County and Heber City both got substantially more CARES money than Wasatch County School District did. Tenfold more than we did, that's just how the, that's just how that money was distributed. They very graciously came to us and said, look, we're not sure what we're going to spend all this CARES money on and we wondered if the school district, um, would like to share some of their CARES money that came directly from the federal government. And so we're in the process of, of, uh, being reimbursed. Forty-eight thousand is coming from Heber City, sixty-two, one-sixty from Wasatch County. I believe Keith, we've already got the check from Heber City. And, uh, uh, we just recently, um, sent an invoice over to the county and I'm sure that check will be coming soon. We were invoiced, we didn't know how this was quite going to shake out, but we did get invoiced from the company and we wanted to get them paid. It was a, it was a big bill to carry for too long, just while everybody was working out the, the semantics. And so that's why we, we want this on record. Even though it was just pass-through money that, that the board approved this purchase and I know you were all aware of it and, and gave your, your verbal approval earlier. We, we'd asked the board to vote on this tonight to, to ratify it.
I make a motion that we approve the CARES back to school kits to CARES grant, federal government. That see that move that either from Heber City.
Yeah. Have a motion and a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just appreciate the cooperation from.
Yeah, that was great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Kelly? I think this is appropriate. I was in a meeting yesterday with county council. Hey, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Moss, we got to go to the microphone. But on that, I was not saying.
No, I wouldn't, because I think this is important. The, the, the Wasatch County CARES money is going to total about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And I think some of the mitigation efforts that we're doing is again, the reason why we're staying in school. One of the things that I want to show you that they purchased, I'm going to steal the screen for a minute, are tents for cafeteria purposes. We were really worried about ta, uh, our cafeteria spaces because that's a place where we couldn't social distance and kids were sitting on top of each other. So the three secondary schools all purchased tents that we rent for conferences from time to time. This top one is TMS, TMS, TMS. So they purchased the tents, this is the high school tent, we haven't put sides up, but tomorrow the sides will go on here. We also purchased heaters to go in and you'll see the inside here, uh, of the tents and the tables to go in them were also part of that purchase from Wasatch County. And Mike Davis and Dustin Grable were the people who helped, uh, make that happen. They, they were the catalyst behind this grant of again, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in supplies. The other thing that they bought us, I don't have a picture of it, but I would show you are, they're called aeroclaves. And it's a device that you would set in this room and it fogs the room. You push a button and six minutes later you can get the machine, take it to another classroom. And they're industrial, they were expensive and they, they purchased six of those for us along with the product as well as handheld fogging guns and machines. So our custodians at night take these fogging guns and walk the building and fog every classroom every night. And every school has one of those along with six of these aeroclaves. And so again, the county, Board Member Hanson, you said, we appreciate the cooperation between the entities. Heber City helped us as well, but the county yesterday approved the reimbursement for the three-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
So just so everybody understands, the tents are to expand the capacity of the, of the cafeteria.
Correct.
You, you've all seen these packed cafeterias at our schools. Trying to social distance is very difficult and this just gives us uh, an expanded area for our kids to spread out in.
Yep, and it, and the kids like it, they use them. Most of the principals have said that's the first place kids go. We have bought heaters, industrial safe heaters that will go in those tents to heat them in the winter as well. So.
They're safe, uh, they, no chance of asphyxiation in?
No, no. They're, they're OSHA certified, approved. They're not just Mr. Buddy heaters that you buy down.
Everybody bring one for.
Well, we have to follow OSHA guidelines and, and they were fairly expensive as well. They were like a thousand bucks a piece, but again, this is ways that we're staying in school. And the partnership between the districts and the county, uh, I have a meeting once a week with them and they're very cooperative and, and want to help because they understand the importance of kids being in school and understand if our kids are in school, the economy grows and people can go to work. So they've been very helpful.
What we're doing in school is working. The reason that we got the, the new waiver, um, approved to seven days is because after following the numbers, these quarantine kids that you're describing, Tom, that, that went home and, and spent fourteen days with no symptoms and, and went back to school, only one and a half percent of those quarantined students in the state of Utah were actually coming down with COVID. So with that information, that was when the state health department was willing to do the reduced quarantine. There's very, there's still very, very small transmission rates at school. That's because it's controlled. We're doing these things to social distance and we're wearing masks. And I, I would say on the record that doesn't matter if you're a Democrat or a Republican, if you wear a mask, it works. And the schools are approving that in the state of Utah, that you follow the protocol and you do these things that has been set forth. The transmission rates in our schools is very, very low. We appreciate everybody's efforts. We, we appreciate Sean Kelly, our, our operations guy for stepping to the plate and really, uh, doing his part during this whole pandemic. He's carried a very heavy load as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that concludes our action items, we'll move on to the board report. It's an item of reference. The USB conference will be held virtually on January seventh and eighth. And they will be taking roll.
That's for Board Member Holmes?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, we'll move on.
Okay, as far as the superintendent's report, we got our communication via email, um, at about four o'clock this afternoon from the, from the Department of the Army, just letters entitled, US Army Corps of Engineers from the Sacramento office. Chuck Easton has been our wetlands advisor and specialist. He's put together, uh, some very extensive reports, he's worked closely with the Army Corps. Back when we were doing our due diligence, he was in verbal communication with the Army Corps. And, uh, he's, he's done a marvelous job leading us through this process and, and gave us some great advice and some, some great, uh, evaluation at the very beginning before we ever bought the land that is, that has proven to be absolutely accurate and correct. So, um, I called Chuck at four o'clock and, here he is, he's, he's made the trip up the canyon and, and, uh, I really appreciate you coming, Chuck, and if you wouldn't mind, um, coming to the microphone and, and maybe just explaining for the, for the board and myself and the, and the audience and the listening audience and what our next step, steps are, and maybe the board may have some questions for you. And tell us a little bit about, about what this means. It's a, it's a very complex procedure, process. Tell us what today's communication means and what our, and you don't need to get into the details, just an overview of what it means and, and, uh, um, I don't, I don't, we don't need to go through the letter line by line or anything. If you'll just give us an overview and then talk to us about, about next steps. And board, jump in at any time and ask questions.
Okay, so what the Corps basically said to us today was that they approved the delineation that we've performed and the work that we performed over the last couple of years actually on this site, that the wetlands that we've marked there on that map, that the Corps concurs with the size and location of those wetlands. We were not arguing with them regarding jurisdiction. So we assumed that the wetlands we were seeing were all jurisdictional. So that is why in the letter he talks about a jurisdictional determination. We don't need a jurisdictional determination on this project because we assume that it is jurisdictional. So we were seeking only their verification of the wetland area. And so we obtained that today. And what that means is that we can move ahead with any permitting, assessing, uh, any impacts to those wetlands, providing the Army Corps site design, quantities of cuts and fills, uh, locations of where the impacts are going to be in a proposed mitigation plan. And so, uh, that's all the types of things that'll be, uh, included in the permitting document. We expect that once we submit that to them, they'll give us an answer back in about sixty days. Hopefully no later than that. We've gone so back and forth with them. We've got nearly everything we need, uh, to submit that permit, at least from a, from a environmental standpoint. We've got loads and loads of data, so. And I'm very confident that, um, if we can keep impacts below a half acre, um, and I, I'm confident that that's going to be the case, that, uh, that we'll have a permit in hand easily within the sixty day time period.
And so it'll be, and so it'll be clear that delineation is, is final. It just, the next step is to apply for the actual, the actual permit.
That's right.
But the delineation is what it is. It, it's not, it's not movable at this point. And when, uh, you know, when we talk about their involvement, they've been on site several times. They've been in consultation with Chuck, um, multiple times. And, uh, they were, they were influential in, you know, there's, there's an original report that Chuck did, um, that's on our website. And then after working with the Army Corps, there's a, there's a new report that went in on, uh, August thirty-first and that's, that's this report right here. You can see it's, you know, it's maybe seventy-five pages long. The Army Corps was involved and, and worked closely with Chuck to make sure he was hitting all the things and, and evaluating the things they wanted evaluated. So we know the delineation is a final determination by the, by the Army Corps and now we just have to simply apply for the building permit. And, uh, we're, you know, as Chuck's talked about being confident, we're not going to disturb most of this wetlands. We're going to disturb less than a half acre. There's one-point-seven-nine delineated, only, only less than point-five will be disturbed or, or mitigated, maybe even to near this other site. Is what we've talked about, is that correct? Yep?
Yeah, yes.
And we also, I, I shared with the, the folks before you got here, during an earlier announcement that, um, they had, they had given approval or, uh, at least given verbal approval of us, uh, to use that as an educational tool, that two acres. Well, this, this piece that we see that's green, there, there's a couple of other spots that, that are included in the one-point-seven-nine. So we'll avoid pretty much all of that site and it will, it will, it will be the part that acts as an educational, living laboratory, um, for our students. Any, any questions that you, that you might have? From Chuck, I've provided all of you with, uh, with the letter and the, and the maps and if you have any questions regarding that, now would be a great time to, to pose them to.
I don't have any, any questions, but I would just like to say thank you for working with us. You know, as we started this process and we rely on experts to, to help us through the process and your expertise is, has been invaluable here and given us a site, uh, we can build future schools on, um, whatever they may be. But as we deal with, um, public opinion and why did you do this or why did you do that? You know, as a board, I think it's our, our obligation to rely on experts. We're not engineers, you know, there's a lot of opinions out there about this site. We rely on the expert's opinion, on the analysis, and finally, the Army Corps of Engineers, who's the final authority on this process. And so thank you for all of your work on this, what you, what you helped us with and your recommendation is what the Corps approved. So thank you, we appreciate it very much and are glad to be working with, with you and your expertise.
Thank you, yeah, it's been a, it's been a pleasure. It's a good project and, and, uh, we're excited to, to see it move forward and, 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 uh, you know, with the appropriate mechanisms in place. Yeah, it's a good thing, so thank you, appreciate it.
That's all I have. I, I don't have anything for executive session tonight. If there's a, if there's any board members that, that know of any, any items that would constitute a closed session, you could speak up now.
I don't think so. Alright, we'll have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.